Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 13th, 2015. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with the policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
All right, if you need anything, you can lie.
Yeah, is that why you're up?
Yes, there actually was a second.
That's why I was saying.
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 Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 13th, 2015. The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with the policy, the requests to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion.
Okay, it's one of those things where you just read it.
Um, I'll be sitting right here if you need anything.
All right, if you need it, you can lie.
All right, I'll come on.
Yeah, is that why you're up?
When I hear there's any issue, we're probably going to get the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Um, I'll be sitting right here if you need anything.
All right, if you need it, you can lie.
All right, I'll come on.
Yeah, is that why you're up?
When I hear there's any issue, we're probably going to get the meeting.
All right, thank you.
You know, I would say, I would just say, yeah, I got it.
And we found another.
It wasn't this.
So it's got something.
Can I speak?
I can think of lots.
Do you have your email also?
She needed over here to get her.
I'm glad you're not.
Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular board meeting
of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, April 6th, 2015 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Tisher Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Straight. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which its statements, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Ms. Williams will lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
OPS Vision, every day, or every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Before we do roll call, is there a motion to approve the excused absence of Ms. America?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there's a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mrs. Underwood to approve the excused absence of Ms. America. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here and I.
America.
Scanlon.
Present, aye.
Snow.
Present, aye.
No, let's just, let's vote on the motion and we'll just so, aye, thank you. Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Oh, Fay.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Six aye.
So motion carries and at this time, would you do roll call, please?
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
America.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Present.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Present.
Eight present.
This time, Mr. Andrews for the school spotlight.
Madam President, thank you and good evening. Tonight, we have two school spotlights and the first one has to do with green ribbon schools, schools that are particularly environmentally friendly. As you recall, last year, we had a winner in Fontanelle and a winner district wise in OPS. This year, we've got nominations so far, no winners as yet, we hope to have that coming down the line. We have two schools nominated and here to tell us about that are administrators and tax staff to give us more details. Have they please come to the podium, join me in welcoming them, please. Gomez Heritage and Wilson Focus are the schools.
Good evening. I get the great pleasure of introducing our two new spotlight schools. Under the direction of Dr. Turnquist, Sue Nelson coordinates the Green School Initiative and I assist. But before I introduce them, I need to tell, Mr. Snow, remember we were before you in the fall and we promised 100% participation of all of our schools, guess what?
You got it?
We got it.
Awesome.
Not only do we have that, the Boys and Girls Club, our after-school program, has also agreed to do recycling, so we're moving right along. But we would like to introduce two of our schools who have been nominated by the State of Nebraska to receive the Green Ribbon Award. You need to know that the Omaha Public Schools is the only district in the state that has ever received this award. In the whole state of Nebraska, we're the only school district and we're the only schools. And the program started in 2012 and each year, we've had at least one or two schools represented. So this year, we have two great schools, two awesome schools. We have Wilson Focus, Mr. Brett Anderson will talk about Wilson, and we have Mr. Campton will talk about what's going on at Gomez. Thank you.
All right, I was told I have one minute, so you got that, Matt? One minute. A lot of our credit goes to Pete Mott, who's our, we call him our head chef, but he's also our cafeteria manager. And he actually spearheaded some of our recycling when we started grab and go and then he started to start at the gardens, the next thing I know, we were building garden boxes, so every classroom now has a five-foot by 10-foot garden box out back. We've created an outdoor classroom, we put in a greenhouse, we put in a composter, our kids compost for breakfast, they compost their lunch stuff, they recycle, the kids go around and take leadership and going around and actually collecting all the recycling throughout the building, so the kids actually are the spearhead behind this whole thing now. And they're the ones making sure that we're either turning off lights, saving energy, how we're charging our computers and all that kind of stuff. And we had quite an increase from the last time that we did it, because the last time we did it, we weren't doing very well. We weren't very green at first, so we've come a long way in becoming a very green school. And we have a lot of things from our garden where they're growing produce now and the produce actually we're using in our enrichment classes, so in our cooking classes, we're also using it for our science, so they're getting to actually eat the stuff that they're growing too, so we're using it a lot of different ways. And then our hydroponics, they're actually growing algae and they're growing snails and they're doing a lot of things too, to study the environment. So we have a lot of pieces kind of tied to this, as well as our fuel up to play and working with the Midwest Dairy Council, there's just a lot of pieces.
All right, along with Brett, we've done a lot at Gomez Heritage. First, I want to recognize Joanne Kavetsky and Amy Hansen, our two ASL teachers, they're the spearheads of our Green School Committee. But some of the things that we do, it's not only recycling, but it's also about the wellness. And this past year, we've had over 350 kindergarten through fourth graders in sports programs at the Crock Center or at our school on Saturday schools or after school. We also had staff and parent weight loss programs that we keep track of and Zumba classes. As far as the gardens, we have two outdoor classrooms and we have 13 raised garden beds. Wells Fargo is an adopt school partner with us and they have, last year, they had a master gardener come help us decide what to plant and how to take care of it. They came back during summer school to touch base with the kids and then they came back in the fall and they actually helped harvest the tomatoes and everything they needed for the parents to teach them how to make salsa. So that was a great day for the parents. Along with that, our landscaping that we've put in the last three or four years, we've always looked at that as native grasses and types of plants that do not need a lot of water, so we don't have to water during the summer. Our recycling in the cafeteria for breakfast and lunch every day, last I checked, we have more recycling pickups than trash pickups each week. It kind of flip-flopped when we started that program. And on Friday mornings, our parents have a recycling pickup program. The BTO bought a blue trash can for each office and classroom in the building and every Friday morning, the parents come and pick up all the trash and all the recycling materials in the school to be recycled. There's much more, but lastly, the fruits and vegetables program we have on Tuesdays and Thursdays where every student in the building gets a fruit or vegetable at 2:00 and the parents are the ones that take those around to all the classrooms, so learning doesn't get disrupted, it's just something for them to snack on while they're still learning. So we're very proud of what we've done and we hope to win the award.
Just one last word, the award will be announced Earth Day, April 22nd, so let's be listening for our schools because I'm pretty sure we'll get those two awards. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentations.
Thank you, Madam President. Now, we honor an outstanding student who's in our midst tonight. Northwest is in the school spotlight. Her family magazine, a local monthly here in Omaha, recently highlighted Nicole Corillo and her parents in its latest issue specifically for her work in the community. She and her mom and school staff are here with us this evening, please join me in welcoming them to the podium now.
Good evening, Madam President. Superintendent Evans, appreciate the opportunity to come before you to introduce two of the great ambassadors for Northwest High School, very proud of the work that both of them have done. Marisol Corillo is the mom and she is our bilingual liaison. She also is a sponsor for our Thrive Club, which last year only had 30 students in it and this year, we are looking at 62, 65 students in that program, so they have doubled in numbers. They have been featured in the Omaha World Herald on the front page earlier in the school year and a documentary was done on them by the Nebraska Loves Public Schools. And then they've been featured in the magazine, as you can see, Mr. Evans is holding their family magazine is where they were just featured. Nicole gets the opportunity to speak and to tell you the things that she's involved in, because Nicole's involved in several things, I couldn't keep track of all of them, so I told her to highlight herself and to brag about herself. Mom didn't want to speak, which was okay. And so with that, I'm going to introduce Nicole Corillo. Dr. Chisholm would like to take some credit for her because he's her Sunday School teacher, but he doesn't get that credit tonight, but let me introduce Nicole Corillo.
Thank you very much for having me here today. My name's Nicole Corillo, I'm a junior at Northwest High Magnet School. I am involved in Student Council, National Honor Society, Concert Choir, and I am the vice president for our Thrive Club. I'm also one of the leaders for Healthy Huskies, which we funded with a $25,000 grant from Children's Hospital this past year. I'm also a part of the National Youth Advisory Health Council with the School Based Health Alliance and I have been working with them as well. With the Thrive Club, we've been working a lot with doing community service, so our main focus is to develop servant leaders and so that's what we've been working on. This year, we have adopted a family from Burma and so working with them, teaching them English, kind of just helping them with the things that we take for granted. With Healthy Huskies, we've been focusing on adolescent obesity and we've been working with students every other week and showing them ways that they can stay healthy with healthy eating, exercise, and a healthy body image. Also, with Student Council, National Honor Society, we also want to focus on volunteer work and just creating a positive community environment and a family at our school. And Northwest has been so good to me and my family these past three years and I know with Mr. Lee this year, he's been very supportive and I know that the Thrive Club and Healthy Huskies wouldn't have been possible without his help, so thank you very much.
So we do really want to recognize them because they are great ambassadors for Northwest, appreciate all that they do, appreciate, I'm going to take this opportunity too, to also say, appreciate all that you do for us and to support Northwest High School, because we wouldn't be moving forward if it wasn't for all of us working together and for young people like Nicole and her mother, so thank you again.
Thank you very much. And Nicole, I think you were part of the program that I visited last summer, the training program, and so I can tell you that even in the summer, Nicole was working really hard, give up a whole day or more, I think, definitely more, to prepare leadership for the students at Northwest and I got to sit in for a while on their training program, it was awesome. So great job, thank you. At this time, we will move on to Board and Superintendent Communications and we have the Treasurer's Report. We also want to introduce Connie Kenoke, is that, did I say that correctly? She is our new CFO. For those of you who do or don't know, Dr. Paul Leftus at the end of January, and so Connie comes to us from Lincoln, Nebraska, and I'm assuming that Mr. Evans is going to talk a little bit about that, but I want to recognize you. The Treasurer's Report is attached to our documents. With that, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. And yes, just to build a little bit on Connie's background, prior to working in Lincoln Public Schools, she worked at Nebraska Department of Education. She's a CPA and has a long accounting background, but also a long history with school finance, which in our case with Tiosa and some of the plans that come into it, that's a fairly complicated piece, but I can share with you that she's already hit the ground running in a week and a, not even a full two weeks yet, and we're grateful for her presence here. And we're in the midst right now of also having Council of Great City Schools bring a team of experts from across the United States to work with Connie on a whole analysis of how we're organized in our finance department, how we're staffed in our finance department. We want to get some of that background from folks across the nation, so Connie's been already in contact with them and we're looking forward, hopefully within the next, I think we're looking at approximately six to eight weeks, we'll have a team in, which is interesting because in about three, four weeks, we'll also have a team from Council of Great City Schools reporting on operations, on an audit that they did with Dr. Turnquist and her staff. So I wanted to start with that and I'm going to quickly move to some other items, Madam President. First, next month, we hope to have another spotlight of a student that you may have seen in the Omaha World Herald, who was recognized as the Midwest Regional Spelling Bee Champion, Brooke Bilby, who will be attending a big, big spelling bee opportunity in Washington, DC. She's a sixth grader at Jocelyn, so I wanted to mention that, that we'll be having her here next week. I also wanted to hand up to the school board, an article that was written by one of our community members, Preston Love, in reference to the contractors and especially our inclusion program and some of the good work they're doing, so I really appreciated the article that Preston Love wrote, I know it's going to be published in some of the North Omaha magazines. And I also wanted to mention to the school board, March 24th at 2:00, there is a contractors' meeting of which they'll be reaching out to all of our small and developing businesses and also on March 26th, there's a BOE workshop and you'll be hearing more about that. I think we've sent some early notification, but Dr. Turnquist and I will make sure you continue to receive notification in regard to that. And the next item I wanted to mention is, just in case no one did see this as well, we have some expertise in our district, and this is a picture from the World Herald of a teacher at Liberty Elementary, who also is a significant playwright and musician who's written scores for plays that are now being shown, so a young teacher for us who is doing great work with our kids, but really has skill sets beyond that. So some really neat things from staff that sometimes we don't have a chance to tell them that we appreciate that good work we're doing. And finally, I want to end with a very difficult conversation for me and that is to share that we have actually our largest group of retirees ever, I believe, in the district's history is what I've been told, and I wanted to make a special point of thanking particularly a large group of principals that are going to be retiring at the end of this year. Matt Brandl, who is on your board agenda, will be leaving Morton. Phyllis Brooks will be retiring from Kennedy. Aaron Daley is retiring from Wacanda. Mike Dotson is retiring from JP Lord's. Mark Suing is retiring from, oh, Saddle Brook, my mind went blank for a minute, and Denise McCow is retiring from Picot. And I guess finally, and probably this is the one that's most difficult for me, just because of the close working relationship, Dr. Janice Garnett will be retiring. And I say that very difficult for me to say that, because I can tell you that in almost two years of working with her, I have found her to be one of the most highest quality individuals, not only personally, but professionally, and it's been my honor and privilege to call you not only a colleague, but a dear friend, and I greatly appreciate the service, I believe, well, I won't say the number of years, I'll leave that for you, whether you want to share anything about the number of years of service you've given, not only as a teacher, but a longtime administrator, caring about kids and staff for all those years. Thank you, thank you so much.
I want to say that it has been over three decades and I have enjoyed the entire time I've been in Omaha Public Schools, I don't think I know anything differently, but I've enjoyed working with the parents, the students, the teachers, my colleagues, and you too, Mr. Evans, and I will be your biggest cheerleader on the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And with that, Madam President, that's my announcements.
All right, thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to Board Member Communication. Do we have any, Mrs. Fay?
Last week, Dr. Kerberg and I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee, which meets once a month during the school year. And I don't know about you, Dr. Kerberg, but I thought that after the business portion of the meeting was over, the presentation from the folks from the Eastern Nebraska Wheelchair Athletic Association was really one of the best ones we've ever had. The SEAC, which is what the Special Education Advisory Committee goes by, is made up of staff, board members, administration, parents, and vendors who support our special education students in the district. It's a really neat group of people. And the guest speaker was, as I said, from the Eastern Nebraska Wheelchair Athletic Association and from All Play, which is a miracle baseball league that helps to build and promote barrier-free baseball leagues for students with physical and intellectual disabilities. And I will be your biggest cheerleader on the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And with that, Madam President, that's my announcements.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to Board Member Communication. Do we have any, Mrs. Fay?
Last week, Dr. Kerberg and I attended the Special Education Advisory Committee, which meets once a month during the school year. And I don't know about you, Dr. Kerberg, but I thought that after the business portion of the meeting was over, the presentation from the folks from the Eastern Nebraska Wheelchair Athletic Association was really one of the best ones we've ever had. The SEAC, which is what the Special Education Advisory Committee goes by, is made up of staff, board members, administration, parents, and vendors who support our special education students in the district. It's a really neat group of people. And the guest speaker was, as I said, from the Eastern Nebraska Wheelchair Athletic Association and from All Play, which is a miracle baseball league that helps to build and promote barrier-free baseball leagues for students with physical and intellectual disabilities. And I brought the materials that he presented, and I'll pass them around. The ENWAA is the group that's responsible for the wheelchair baseball league that's at UNO. So if you've ever been at their activity center on a Saturday, or there was an article in the paper a couple of months ago about all of the kids who play, including OPS kids, who play wheelchair basketball at UNO, from little kids through adults. That's one of the programs that they run. But also, they're involved in para-olympic sports and sports at all levels. And then the All Play Miracle Baseball League is a non-competitive league that's really just a way to remove barriers and open up the opportunities for sports to students who have severe physical and intellectual disabilities. So one of the points that he made during his presentation was about student engagement and what a great way sports is to engage students who have maybe some other difficulties in school. So I'm going to pass this around that has his information. It was a really neat presentation. They have websites on here. And they need 75 volunteers every week for All Play Baseball. It's two months, so the information's on here. They're getting ready to start up their league. So if that's something you're interested in, thank you. Mr. Snow.
I had the opportunity to go down to Lincoln to watch South High play for the Class A Basketball Championship. And unfortunately, they did not win the championship. But you saw a tremendous group of young men leave everything on the court. And all those men get to come back, but next year, one man doesn't get to come back, and that's Anthony and Amy, who finished out his senior year with South High and only lost two games. And this kid has made tremendous bounds. And I wish him the best of luck. He's one of my kids, and I look forward to seeing him come back and talk to the community about what he's done and greater adventures. Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
I've been just kind of reflecting since our last meeting about when we were talking about the Student Improvement Grant and everything. And I know there was a lot of conversation back and forth. And I guess since then, just some of the articles in the paper and reading about it, I would like to ask for the next agenda meeting to address one thing that kind of was outstanding that I don't think we addressed as a board, was that we were, as a district, we're advancing students that are below grade level to the next grade. And it seems that it's a culture that has been around for a while. One of the quotes that kind of hit me the most was, "Some kids..." No, it's not "some," it's "most." They're three or four, and four grade levels behind. This is not something that's new at Wacanda. This is happening year after year. We can't keep doing the same thing and hoping for a different result. And that kind of just, I mean, it resonated with me that we were sitting there talking about kind of the details with the SIG grant, and yet we failed to kind of see that we have a culture that we're advancing kids that are below grade level, whether it be in reading or other subjects. And I think that that's something that we definitely need to address as a board, because that's something that's going to prohibit us from accomplishing our strategic goal. And, you know, I'd just prefer that we had a discussion about it publicly, talking about what can we do as a board, whether there's policies that we can strengthen to help teachers and parents address that. And also, you know, just address the situation that apparently has been, from one of the teachers, it's been around in OPS quite a long time. And I think that's something that, big picture, I think we need to address as a board.
I saw Mr. Evans write that down, and Ms. Williams and I will add that to... Mr. Ray, would you make sure you add that to our board officers? Are there any other... Mr. Wayne.
I know it typically takes two board members to put something on the agenda, so I would concur with that on our next agenda.
All right. So we'll chat with everybody about that. And Ms. Underwood.
I just had a quick update. Two Thursdays ago, I was asked to serve on a panel at the Young Professionals Summit, and it was related to education policy. It was myself and Jim Vogel that served on this panel, and then we also had a moderator. And we weren't quite sure what the turnout would be for, you know, something like that. There's a lot of really exciting breakout sessions at something like the Young Professionals Summit. But there were probably about 100 young professionals there. And Joseph Young asked them to raise their hands if they had kids in public school or private school, or if they didn't have kids at all. And about half of them raised their hand when asked if, you know, they didn't have kids at all. And so I thought that was really interesting, and I thought it says something about the level of engagement of young professionals in our community, and that they care about something like education policy. I also thought that it was a great opportunity to show that, you know, discussions around topics like that don't have to be scary or feel like they're going to get contentious. We just had a very open and honest dialogue, and I thought it went really well. I thought that it was also an opportunity to show my support for public schools and talk about some of the cool things that we're doing in OPS. Nebraska Loves Public Schools was there handing out T-shirts, and I think that they ran out of all of them. There was a long line of young professionals that wanted to pick them up afterward. So I thought that was pretty cool.
Great. Okay, I just have a couple items. Mr. Job from the Finance Department, and I will be, there he is, presenting on Open Book to a governmental accounting group at UNO on Thursday with the new transparency that OPS has done with Open Books. So we're not quite sure what to expect, but we're going to present that. I also want to share that when I was at the President's Conference for the Nebraska School Board Association, I was part of a taping with NETV. And that will be a program that will be, they're going to go out and shoot some scenes of different public schools within the state of Nebraska, and then they'll override that with comments from school board presidents around the state. So you'll see that program coming up. And if I find out ahead of time, I will let you know about that. Then I also just want to thank Brook High School for hosting the middle school swim competition. But also, just to thank all of our coaches who are part of the middle school programs, who are building up those students for the future. It was just a great opportunity to watch swim coaches really engage with students. So I want to just thank all of our middle school coaches for all the work that they do. Sometimes it's not recognized through state championships or district championships, but you are valued, and I want you to know that. The last item I've got is just to remind the board and to let the public know, we do have a lot of activities coming up in the next few weeks. Mrs. Underwood will share with us the student assignment plan dates and times, which we have a number of meetings coming up on that. Mr. Evans talked about the meeting that'll be coming up on economic inclusion. So we do have a lot of things that both the public and the board will be involved with. And I'm sure as we get closer to doing interviews for principals and all of that, we'll be having a lot of meetings at the schools within our sub-districts to just be an active part of all of the interview process. So I just wanted to remind everybody of that. I know we have a lot going on, and we have graduations coming up and everything else. So we will try to keep our agendas as close to a minimal amount of time as we possibly can. With that, we will move on to public comment and recognition. And our first public comment is from Walter Soudad. Please state your name, the spelling of your last name, and your address. You will have five minutes to speak. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute left and when you have 30 seconds left.
Good evening. My name is Walter Soudad, D-O-D-D. I live at 3233 Madison Street in Omaha. I am an Omaha Public School retired educator, member of the Class V School Employees Retirement System, OSERS, and I am a taxpayer, which people sometimes forget. I also represent the Omaha Education Association Retirement as its vice president. I will address two issues. LB448, which is combining the Omaha School Employees Retirement System with the Nebraska School Employees Retirement System. And LB447, which would amend Class V School Employees Retirement System, which the OPS Board opposes. LB448 would transfer all the current members of the Omaha School Employees Retirement System into the Nebraska School Employees Retirement System on an unspecified date. It would also require all regular employees of the Omaha School District hired on or after an unspecified date to become members of the Nebraska School Employees Retirement System. The merger will result in a unified retirement system for all school employees throughout the state. The OEA Retirement Association opposes the merger. OSERS has been in existence since 1909, and is the largest-serving, continuous-operated employees retirement system in the United States, and has close personal relationships OSERS has been responsive to the changing needs of its members throughout the years by maintaining current and livable retirement benefits and providing small, focused retirement programs. The OSERS Board manages the investments for the retirement system in a prudent manner, consistent with the need to provide both safety of capital and the necessary investment return to guaranteed payment of the benefits promised the retirement system. In addition, the benefit improvement has also been matched with necessary assets and/or contribution levels placed prior to implementing of the enhanced benefit. Furthermore, there are differences between the two groups. OSERS offers a payment of service annuity, single employer pension plan, provides more options at retirement, has one alternate form of payment, also post-cost of living adjustment and the funding source. In the interest of effective and efficient government, the employees would be best served by the continuation of both systems. LB447 amends various statutes in Class IV School Employees Act, changed the governance of the Omaha Employees Retirement System. It makes four changes. One, provides for direct election of member trustees by the underlying members groups, establishes four-year terms for all elected trustees, and reduces the board of trustees from 10 to 7. Number two, it provides for independent investment authority for OSERS Board of Trustees. Number three, places OSERS staff under the control of the OSERS Board of Trustees. And four, provides for independent legal counsel for OSERS. The members of the retirement system support the changes in the bill. We strongly support giving the final investment authority to the OSERS Board and having the authority over the retirement system director. The members of the retirement system deserve to have retirement boards of trustees, retirement counseling, and retirement staff. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Actually, we can't do questions during public comment, but thank you so much for your comments.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ray, do you have any other public comment?
No, I do not.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I just want to remind everybody in the public to silence your phones and for the board to avoid use of the phones. And we will hopefully move through the meeting quickly so we can get back to our activities. I have several changes on the consent agenda, so I'm going to walk you through what they are. I-7 grant fund budget has been moved to J-2F in action. I-17 Kagan Student Engagement is now J-2G. I-18 Kagan Cooperative Meeting for Instructional Leaders is now J-2H. Also, let me just make sure I have the right item. I-20 and I-21 had two typos that did not impact the intent of the documents. They were corrected this afternoon, and they were the use of licensor and licensee. So it was just a typo between saying licensee and licensor.
It's correct.
And it's correct. It's been corrected, and it's on, I think it's on page three. I'm looking here. Yep, it's on page three, the top paragraph. So if you need to go back and look at that. But I just wanted to make sure you all knew that that had been corrected. All right. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
So motion by Ms. Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Ms. Williams and second by Mrs. Fay to approve the consent agenda that is before us. Are there any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Godding.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to information items. The first item is J-1A Strategic Plan Update on, this is huge, Comprehensive Plan to Raise Achievement in Math. Dr. Kerberg?
Thank you, Mrs. Godding, members of the board. We are delighted that we've continued our work on focusing on math, but we presented to you this comprehensive plan. It's attached. But we thought you'd like to hear mid-year, how are we doing? How's the plan working? And rather than have central office staff talk about it, we've invited some colleagues to join us. I'd like to welcome them to come to the front. We have Mrs. Sharla Johnson. She's the principal at Bell Ryan. You may have seen her in the paper. The Math Studio Classroom was just in, I think it was Midlands, not too long ago. In addition to that, I think we have Mr. Darren Rasmussen, middle school principal, who is also joining us. And I know we have a teacher, oh, great, fantastic, from, I believe, Oak Valley. And I will not destroy your name. I'll let you introduce yourself. And then if you have any questions about the actual plan that's attached to the agenda, we also have our Math Supervisor, Lead Teacher, and Elementary Supervisors here, if you have questions about the actual attachment and all the work we're doing. I'd like to welcome Mrs. Johnson to just give you her thoughts about progress that's been made in mathematics this year at Bell Ryan.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come talk to you about Math Studio. I feel very passionate about it. And I want to thank Dr. Kerberg and Mrs. Dotson for inviting me to be a part of this conversation. I really believe that Math Studio is transformational learning. And I'm going to say that again, transformational. It's very, very impactful and changes a school culture quickly. I was very lucky this year to participate in four math, two-day Math Studio sessions with my amazing kindergarten teacher, Jimmy Watts, along with UNL's Professor Dr. Heaton, several math coaches throughout the district, and other administrators throughout the district. We spent eight truly profound days delving into the process of teaching and planning for math. And it was very intense. It was afternoons that we really talked about what the process of planning for math looked like, and also visiting classrooms, and coming back and having some in-depth discussion about what took place and how that translated to student achievement and the teachers' continued professional development. I really felt that I became a better instructional leader after this experience. It really deepened my understanding about effective math instruction, and really will help me to continue to build a positive school culture around the best practices in math instruction. I had lots of aha moments and takeaways, so I'm going to just share a few of those with you. But I really learned that coaching is a true process. Change doesn't happen overnight. So as we continue to build the capacities in our teachers, we're really bringing the unconscious to the conscious and really helping them become reflective practitioners through the Math Studio process. And, you know, I really feel that this translated from not just Math Studio, but for me, into how I approach teachers in pre-planning conferences, evaluation, appraisal. I took a lot of the positive pieces from that into other parts of my job. Really, a dialogue in planning and reflective questions to spur meaningful and engaging instruction, really about that teacher reflection and why they plan the way they plan, and implementing the best practices for students. I also learned that teaching is a process that involves risk-taking and encouraging our teachers... our teachers to be risk-takers. And it's not just about the math coach or the administrator walking into the classroom and giving advice on how they should be instructing, but really supporting them through the process of the thinking about being a reflective practitioner using best practices. And then I really learned, too, about developing and supporting the role of the math coach. We have some wonderful math coaches out here in the district that are ready to do a great job. But sometimes as administrators, we have a lot of things going on and may not really understand what the role of the math coach is and what the math coach can be doing to positively impact the classroom. And I really have a great understanding of how I can support the math coach and what the array of different activities that they can be doing to help support the teacher. So I really feel that I gained a lot of important learning through Math Studio in a very short amount of time. I think that if I didn't have this experience and wouldn't have carved out this time for myself to learn, it might have taken me a few years of professional development truly to get where I'm at today. So that's how powerful I think Math Studio is, and I know for sure that this is so very important, so very important to our continued progress in math. So I hope that as you move forward, you continue to think about how we can involve math coaches, administrators, and teachers in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. I should mention, as Mr. Rasmussen comes up, if Mrs. Johnson stays just for a second, do you remember when you were first new to the Board, there was a reception our chancellor held with our superintendent? It was a University of Nebraska-Lincoln partnership with OPS. It's sponsored by Sherwood &amp; Logier. I sat with Mr. Scanlon at the luncheon. It was our first time we got to sit together and talk. And at that time, there's a great flurry about what are we going to do with this massive grant from Sherwood &amp; Logier. This is one of those activities. And if you look here, Comprehensive Math Plan, there's lots more, but this gives you a sense. From Bryan Middle, Darren Rasmussen, our principal there, has been focused on mathematics. I'll let you tell you, I'll let him tell you about what he's been up to.
Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Kerberg, and thank you, President Gadding, and Mr. Evans, and Mrs. Christopherson, members of the Board, for giving me the opportunity to share what Bryan Middle School is doing to increase student achievement in math. We're excited about our predictive assessment results that are coming through, through acuity. We're anticipating upwards of 8% growth in math this year. And our school improvement goal is 5% across the board, as many schools are in all the testing areas. So we're really trying to strive and go for that gold award in excellence in school improvement. I did provide a couple of handouts that will help you visualize and see what we're doing at Bryan Middle. Sometimes you can talk about it, but I think it's good to see in pictures and some of the things that we're doing down at Bryan Middle School to improve our math achievement. First of all, I just, we're really focusing on implementing the strategies in this book that you're all probably really familiar with. So focusing on the best instructional practices as outlined in our Academic Action Plan, as you see on that first handout, some of the areas that we're focusing on, some of the things that our teachers are doing every day. And you'll see focus on literacy and academic vocabulary and the use of and incorporation of word walls within our math classrooms. You also see math embedded in real-world contexts and connecting math to real-world situations. This example that I share with you, there's students working through six different stations, calculating sum, taxes, quantities, comparing and contrasting, all real-world tasks. And using a hook that I'll talk a little bit about with our book study is just creating increased engagement, increased curiosity among students. Use of multiple representations and manipulatives and cooperative learning stations, as you'll see, also embedded daily within our math classrooms. Engagement techniques such as individual whiteboards that students are using daily within their classrooms. And then the other thing we do is we recognize our accomplishments. We've had more students this year that have achieved 100% on acuity than we've had in previous years, and we're really focusing on highlighting those students, recognizing those, public praise, making some positive phone calls home. In addition to that, the instructional coaching, as we talked about earlier, plays a big part. We also have a math coach that is a veteran math teacher that works with our math teachers on those strategies, in addition to our administrators doing their coaching rounds. We recently hosted the district coaching session, which was a really powerful day for us. We had over 120 instructional leaders in our building visiting our classrooms. All of our teachers were a part of that, received some five-minute feedback coaching. It was just a great experience overall. And then the Friday night lineup is a weekly memo that I sent out, and I did give you a copy of that. And that really, you know, the purpose of that is, I send this out each week, and the purpose is just to improve teaching and learning one week at a time. And as you'll see, when you look at some of those pictures, it's really providing public praise to teachers, recognizing the outstanding teaching strategies that other colleagues are using within their classrooms, and it really helps build teacher morale, and it's been, allows teachers to get to know each other, and we include everyone in that throughout the school year. So everybody from our support staff, our custodians, to our nutrition service people. And it's been something that's evolved over the last four years, but I think it's been something that's real positive that helps us create a culture of learning, which I think is very important. We've also done a couple of book studies. The first one, and I'll just put this out here, it's Teach Like a Pirate by Dave Burgess. I don't know if any of you have heard of this book. This book is about increasing student engagement, boosting your creativity, and transforming your life as an educator. And we did a book study earlier this year on our entire teaching staff. And pirate stands for passion, immersion, rapport, asking and analyzing, transformation, and enthusiasm. And our teachers have really taken a lot of the strategies and implemented them in their classroom. We asked the teachers, when we talked about this book, we asked the teachers two questions. And the first one is, if your students didn't have to be there, would you be teaching to an empty classroom? That was the first question we asked them. And the second question we asked them is, do you have any lessons that you could sell tickets for? And those two, those two questions created a lot of discussion. And in addition to all of the strategies that Dave Burgess puts out here as far as the hooks to get kids interested, there's all sorts of them. And we've had a lot of teachers throughout the year implement these hooks and come in costumes and just generate that curiosity and boost the engagement of students throughout the year. So that's been a powerful book that we've used this year that I think is, not only in math, but across the board, academic achievement. And the other thing, our math teachers are doing a book study on Accessible Mathematics by Stephen Leinwand, and that's something that our math teachers are looking at as well. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the things we're doing and happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Did you notice his discussion about math talk, math vocabulary? 60% of that NESA math test is based on whether or not they understand the math terms, whether it's polynomial or numerator. So that's real key to our conversations. The third person, oh, one other thing Mr. Rasmussen said, he was up eight percentage points mid-year acuity. We've just looked at mid-year acuity for middle schools. We have 10 out of 12 of our schools up at this time. So that's promising in terms of NESA. And then we have a teacher who can tell you what she's experienced in math this year, Jill Copeland, and from Oak Valley. She's been very involved in one particular program.
I want to first thank you for allowing me to address the Board today about the importance and the effect of primarily math program. I began teaching first grade back in 2007 for the Omaha Public Schools, and during that time, I approached math the same way I see a lot of my peers approaching math. I sat behind the overhead, I had my basal out, and I modeled how to teach problems from the basal. When my students struggled, I basically taught them the same thing over again. I've come to learn that allowing for any differentiation back then was, I just taught from the basal, that's what I was instructed to do. When my students approached math with negativity, my saying was, don't worry about it. Mrs. Copeland was always bad at math, too. I used that as my scapegoat, that it was okay, that math, that you didn't need to be good in math. And I felt that I understood my students' frustration, and by telling them that, too, then they could understand I felt their frustrations. I was letting them that, realize it was okay to not just like or be good at math. So when the opportunity arose and I was ready to go back to school, primarily math was a good fit for me because I was hoping that I'd be able to learn a little bit more on how to be a math teacher. I started primarily math in the summer of 2007, and I was thrown into a whirlwind experience. For two weeks from eight to five, I was stressed to the max, I was pushed beyond my limits, I cried daily, and I wanted to give up. There was one night that I went too far, and I emailed my professor, and I said, you know what, thanks for the experience, but I'm not coming back tomorrow. Within minutes, she emailed me, and she said, that's not an option, I will see you tomorrow, and we will work through this. I'm just going, sorry. And I will, and that was the first time that I realized primarily math was not only a cohort in teaching math, but we were a family, a family of supporters that works together to make sure that they see that you succeed. And that was my big first takeaway for my students, pushing them, letting them struggle, but being right there with them to let them know that I was not going to give up on them, and that they could do it, just as my professor had seen that I could do it as well. So in the fall of 2012, I came back to my first-grade classroom. I had a new outlook on how to teach math. For the first time ever, I got numbers, and I wish that a teacher back when I was going to school in OPS would have taught me in the ways that primarily math let me see numbers and algorithms. So the basal to me was a guideline, a support system, a tool to use to guide my instruction. For the first time, I wanted my students to understand math and not just do math. And my new saying was, you will understand math. I didn't want them just the rote memorization, just to be able to complete a problem and not understand how they got their answer to the problem. So I knew that manipulatives and drawing pictures from primarily math was huge. So in my classroom, manipulatives were out daily, drawing pictures was out, drawing pictures were daily, and math talk was huge. How did you get that? Can someone else explain it in a different way? Do you agree? Do you disagree? I'm getting them to talk it through. Number one, it gave them the confidence that they knew what they were doing. And number two, it allowed me as a teacher to see their thinking and then fix the errors that I saw in their thought process. By allowing my students to have a voice and have an agree or disagree in a productive way, the students felt empowered in my classroom. And let's be honest, kids can sometimes teach kids better than teachers can. Also, primarily math had me get parents involved and figure out how I can connect home and school. So I created math games, math bags, notebooks, to let the parents ask questions when they were confused. I had morning and math muffins, where parents came up and we talked about math in the morning, and just to get them to see the changes in math that are happening so that they can be confident and comfortable to teach their students 21st century math skills. Two years ago, I moved into the, from first grade to third grade, and my initial thought was, oh, no, I'm not good at math. But when I opened up that curriculum, it was the same thing as it was in first grade. Primarily math had set me up to teach my third graders how to have math talk, how to understand multiplication, fractions, and division. Math has gone from something that was scary, something I failed in junior high, high school, and college, to something that I am now passionate about. I have presented on math at curriculum days and even took math to the U.S. Department of Education's Teach to Lead Denver Conference about creating a virtual learning community to teach parents, teachers, and students on 21st century math skills. Because you need to understand math, because once you understand math, the sky's the limit. And I love now seeing kids enjoy math. It's not scary. I don't have kids saying, I don't like math or I don't get it, and it'll never be an excuse in my classroom for me or for any of my students. Because math is difficult, math is frustrating, but math is fun. And it's amazing to watch my kids' thought process come out with, their confidence come out because they created a way to solve a problem different than any of their peers. So again, I'm here to promote primarily math and math education throughout K-12 because it's an amazing experience that I hope more teachers put themselves into. Is it hard? Yes. But is it worth it? Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Jill. There may be some questions from Board members, although not mentioned. Our teachers that complete primarily math, or math in the middle, or intermediate math I-team all have master's degrees in mathematics when they're done, so it's good at that level as well. We have staff here who support these amazing principals and teacher in the math team, so if you have any questions, we would love to entertain those. Otherwise, thank you so much for your attention.
Does anyone have any questions related to what we're doing in math? Well, thank you so much for sharing. Oh, sorry, Mr. Scanlon, I apologize.
Just going through this now with the new Go Math and everything that I'm not very familiar with, obviously it was more memorization in the past. I appreciate the fact that you have parents interacting, coming up explaining that to them, because I think that's going to be a key part to the success. Because when my daughter brings home her homework, I'm usually the one that gets the answers wrong, and it's just a different, a totally new concept that I think that just trying to communicate well with the parents to explain the new process and the new thought of how you can come to an answer multiple ways, I think that's just, that's going to be a key to the success and getting the parent's support, because it is, it is a lot different. So I appreciate the communication you could try to do with the, with the parents and everything.
And you didn't say that your daughter was in 12th grade, right?
She's in first grade. That's how bad it is.
That's funny. Well, I appreciate, thank you so much for coming and sharing with us what's happening in math, and it's very exciting to hear that 10 of our 12 middle schools are ahead in acuity, and so we look forward to some great results this year, and hopefully the same thing happens in our elementary. That's really the goal of this program, to bring us forward. So thank you so much. We will move on to J-1B, and that is Committees of the Board of Education Updates. So the first committee, I'll call on Mr. Wayne, the Americanism Committee, I think they had a meeting.
The Americanism Committee met February 26th. This is our second meeting that we had. The first one was in January. And at the January meeting, we asked staff to think outside the box regarding social studies and Americanism in general, because what may have been Americanism when initially passed in statute has a different feel to it now with the increasing diversity that's going on in America and what all it means to be an American. So with that, we were talking about how to engage students more and how to think outside the box as far as what can we do? And basically, there was four themes that arose out of these conversations, and that was engagement, students' engagement, rigor, literacy, and then cultural proficiency. And there's a couple of key programs we were looking at, and one is Making Invisible History Visible. It's a program that currently is funded through grants that happens in the summertime with students, and we were looking at how do we engage that at all levels in the building, but particularly fourth grade and maybe a ninth or 10th grade class, so they can learn about Omaha North history and Omaha South history and what it really, rich history Omaha has and how to bring that to life, so people can drive down a street and know that Malcolm X was born here, or there used to be a jazz scene right here, and those kind of engaging things. And I would encourage anybody to go out and look at the website, Making Invisible History Visible. You can Google it. They have videos where students go out and interview people, and it's really interesting. But looking at that, there is price tag, so roughly it's about $80,000 to try to implement that into the classroom for all students, particularly at the fourth grade level and looking at some high school engagement. The second piece we were looking at is Reading and Thinking Like a Historian, and this is a way to engage students in a different manner of how to teach history, and this cost is roughly about $52,000 per year. The other area we were looking at is Teachers Curriculum Institute, and this is an interesting program, because I didn't know anything about it, but it's social studies alive and history alive and geography alive and government alive, but actually how to, when teachers walk in, how to engage students and make everything be alive, like in today's modern setting, and how to really engage students in the history and the, and different aspects of social studies. Now, there is a cost to that, but we have not made a full recommendation, but we will come and do that. That's anywhere between $2 million to $4 million, depending if you want to go with the online version versus the actual books and materials. But the more pressing thing that's also going to be coming out of this committee in the short term is going to be the Social Studies Textbook Curriculum Update for six through 12. We have to update it to give perspective. Our current books, there's no mention of 9/11 in them. So that's a major history factor that we, that our students should know about and be engaged in. So there is a need for a history update. Currently, teachers are, you know, printing off materials and still talking about it, but we need a book that has surrounded that, and that's going to be about $2.1 million in the short term. So as we do our budgeting and thinking about that, just keep that in mind that... So as we do our budgeting and thinking about that, just keep that in mind that here in a short couple of months, this committee will be recommending a curriculum update for six through 12. But also keep in mind the other three that we're trying to hammer out to come with a recommendation of how to engage our students in social studies. Any questions?
Mrs. Fay.
I'm a big fan of the Making Invisible Histories Visible. They also have iBooks. Did you look at the iBooks on the NDE website?
Yes.
So those are, if you haven't looked at those, they're free and they're on the NDE website to be in their curriculum, basically. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, and they're made with teachers and area artists. So they also have
The, the cost
Cool illustrations.
Right. So part of that cost is the eBooks that is involved, but part of it is also going to be transportation and training for some of our teachers.
Sure.
But we want to actually take kids out into the area and almost if you've ever been down, and some went down to the Selma event, but down in Montgomery and Alabama, they actually have like Ollie the Trolley Tours in which students actually lead the tours. And that's way down the road, but that's the kind of engagement we want to have with our students of going out and actually seeing those. So that's some of the costs.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that you're looking at all that. I think that's really exciting.
That concludes the committee report.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item is OSER, so I'll just give a quick update on that. If you open the NEPC document, it's page 13 of 115. We're not going to walk through everything, so I just thought I'd highlight that one page. It's actually page 10 in the book itself, but Mr. Evans and Mr. Snow were at the meeting. Mrs. Fay was on for a little bit at the end of the meeting. But NEPC is the entity that we hire to share with us kind of that rearview mirror, look at how our fund is doing. And the market value of the fund right now is $1.238 billion. The 10-year number is 7.4%. The keynoteed piece there is that our actuary report calls for an 8% return and so the 10-year number right now is not achieving that. The rank at the 10-year number out of 100 of the public funds that are defined benefit universe, so there's 100 that they look at, we were ranked sixth in the 10-year. The 5-year shows us at 53, the 3-year at 84, and the 1-year at 97 and so forth, you can see on the document. If you look at the allocation index, that's actually based on the asset classes that we are in. If we had passive management versus active management, that would have been the returns that we would have had. The policy index itself is if we were 100% at policy, which is virtually impossible to ever get to. But if we were at 100% of policy, that would be the passive index managers. The noted item that they had on that was just that our active management has detracted from performance during the quarter and really for the period. If you look at the little quarterly accumulative excess performance, starting in, I think it's the, probably about the first quarter of 2011, you can see that we've had some detraction from where we're at. We have received the January numbers, so our fiscal year-to-date return is a negative 2.6%. And I believe we are down 0.9% for the month of January. Our fiscal year starts on September 1st, so just taking a look at that. The document is very, very long and detailed, but if anybody has any questions, I'm sure those of us on the committee would be happy to answer that if you have anything. Otherwise, that's my report. So if there's no questions, then we'll move to the Student Assignment Plan Committee. Ms. Underwood and Mr. Ray. Not sure.
Sure, I can start and then Mr. Ray or Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie out there in the crowd can help kind of fill in some of the blanks. So we had our workshop a few weeks ago, as you, as the board is aware, and the research staff has been working hard on putting together presentations for the upcoming community meetings, which start this week. So I think we're all excited on the committee to hear, you know, what the community has to say about the updates to the Student Assignment Plan. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe these are going to be structured similar to the facilities, community meetings, where there was kind of an overall presentation and then there were smaller breakout tables that were facilitated by staff.
Correct.
So, which I thought was a very effective format and for something as complicated as the Student Assignment Plan, I think that format will work really well. So I'll just read off the dates and again, these are listed not only on e-meetings here, but on the OPS website as well. They are all from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the first one is this Thursday, March 19th at Benson. Then we have Tuesday, March 24th at South, Thursday, March 26th at North High, Monday, March 30th here in the boardroom, and then Thursday, April 2nd at Burke High. So we hope to have good participation from the community. Mr. Ray, could you tell us, is there going to be any sort of online access either through MindMixer or on the OPS website for giving feedback in case people can't make it to those meetings?
Sure. There will be a PowerPoint, the exact PowerPoint exactly, that we provided to you as the board, but also that we'll provide in those workshops that will be available online. It also has a voiceover and then it will also have a online survey that will be, it's the exact survey that we'll be handing out at the community meetings. So we'll provide that to people who aren't able to make it.
Okay. Great. Thanks. I think that's really all I had unless you wanted to fill in, Mr. Ray or Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie.
No, I just, and I'll give Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie a chance if he wants to, but I also want to think, you know, this is a district effort. This is, this is, a lot of people are involved in this, in every department that's at the table, human resources, district operational services, curriculum instruction, general administration, volunteered people that will come to these meetings at the next four or five, five meetings, who have given up their nights to help facilitate those small group discussions. We've trained them on the Student Assignment Plan, we've trained them on the framework. So this is really a group effort, a district-wide effort to get the information that you need to make a decision on the Student Assignment Plan.
Does anyone have any questions at this time for anyone on the committee? Okay. With that, I guess we did just tweak up the survey a little bit that went out to board members to break down some items between elementary, middle, and high school so that when the community gets it, we have a little bit more of a breakdown. I think that's probably, is that most of the change to the survey?
Yes.
Of what, what parents and community members would be seeing? Okay. Oh, Ms. Underwood.
One other thing I wanted to mention, just because we do, I know we're going to be doing more committee-level work going forward and I know I don't always get to my emails in a timely manner, but just try to keep an eye out for those surveys that go out to the board. It is important that we get feedback from everyone when those surveys go out. So just try to keep a heads up for those since we've got more committee work going forward and I assume we'll have more surveys. Thanks.
Great. With that, we will move on to J-2 action items. So the first action item is J-2A, the Benson High Academy Program. So we'll welcome up, I assume, Anita Harkins.
I'd like to welcome Mrs. Harkins in case we have any questions, but please know, we've included in your cover paragraph, the budget that you'll find on pages 16, 17, 18, and the beginning of 19. In the Benson Task Force Report, the specific dollar amounts beyond the regular budget, we thought that would be of interest for you. And of course, the request tonight is to approve the concept of the Benson High School Career Academy Programs, but we also wanted to be sure you were aware of the cost. So that is itemized in that paragraph. And the Benson principal and leadership team is available to answer any questions. They've done a full presentation on this, but we thought you might have some questions since the last time it was presented. Good evening, everyone.
Hello. Thank you for, thank you for being here and thank you to the Benson team behind you for also being here. I know everybody's put in a lot of time. Does anyone have any questions at this time? We had a good, long presentation before, so I think you gave us a great amount of information. Mr. Wayne?
I move to approve the academy program concept and funding for Benson High School.
So there's a motion for Mr. Wayne to approve the academy program concept and funding for Benson High School. Is there a second?
Second.
Unison, second from Ms. Williams and Mr. Scanlon. So there is a motion on the table from Mr. Wayne and a second from Ms. Williams. We'll go with Ms. Williams. So is that all right? Is there any discussion on this item? If there's no discussion, roll call, please.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Got it.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much for being here and for all the time that you've put in. This is very exciting for Benson, so we're very excited for you. We'll move on to J-2B, Fine Arts Contest Standards, and we did have a big presentation in the past on that, but this is a little bit different because it reflects on the Nebraska standards and how we'll tie into that.
Thank you, Mrs. Godding, members of the board. I'd like to invite the Fine Arts Supervisor Team to come forward. They have a very brief presentation. When we presented in the fall, you asked us to come back with some answers to some questions. And so we created five slides in response to the questions you asked last fall, specifically who is involved in this process, how did we line up with the new fine arts state standards and specifics in regards to the process for rollout and implementation. And I think you know the team. I'd like to highlight one person who is much like Dr. Garnett, who has made the choice to retire this year, Dr. Peg Naylin. And we will miss her tremendously. She has been at the helm of physical education athletics for many years. We are grateful. State championship after state championship. And I believe, Mrs. Erickson, are you leading off or Mrs. Halsey? Whomever would like to, Mrs. Halsey? Okay. Please do. Thank you, Linda, our music supervisor, vocal music.
Good evening to the board. I think that you have the PowerPoint that we've presented.
Chase.
Okay. And we wanted to state historically in that PowerPoint, what we have done with the fine arts standards historically in the state, our participation in development by OPS, the different ways that we have already talked to our staff about that. We were reviewing that in our content areas last August in our curriculum days. We plan to align the state standards to our OPS standards starting this summer, if these are adopted, and then we will present them to our, okay, August Curriculum Day. And as Dr. Kerberg said, we did give a presentation last October 6th of the Fine Arts Update to all of you. There you go. And then forward. So this is part of the historic part of it. Dance is what's embedded into physical education national standards. Media arts has followed the state career ed standard last revised in 2012. Music has had several OIP benchmarks, Nebraska frameworks, national standards, CRTs, then content standards. Theater has national theater standards and visual arts has K-12 and has followed national visual art standards and the Nebraska framework. The participation development by OPS staff in development of Nebraska Fine Arts Standards, this was the timeline. There were several OPS represented by 16 teachers in curriculum instruction and assessment supervisors in writing and reviewing the standards. And so there is the timeline, October 2012. Nebraska Board of Education gave support for standards to be adopted for fine arts. In June of 2013, writing performing arts standards began. In December 2013, full state board report draft was released to the public for input. January 2014, fine arts standards focus groups, and there were some at the Omaha Community Playhouse that some of us participated in. And March 4th, 2014, the Nebraska Fine Arts Standards were adopted. OPS reviewed the fine arts standards. Dance, in the fall of '24, dance standards were aligned to national physical education standards. Media arts in October of last year, media arts standards were aligned to the career ed standards for technology courses. Music, September of 2014, curriculum day staff reviewed the Nebraska Fine Arts Standards. Theater, September 2014, curriculum day reviewed by OPS drama teachers. And visual arts in August of 2014, presentation to all art staff from Nebraska Department of Education Director of Fine Arts, Debbie DeFrain. Aligning the fine arts standards, state standards and OPS standards. Right now, the media arts content aligns to 90% plus standard match as designated by Nebraska Career Education Program of Study for Perkins Funding. And dance, music, theater, and visual arts content areas will be reviewed and presented to staff on curriculum day in the fall of this year. Curriculum day and the adopted fine arts standards. Media arts, again, career education courses and media arts aligned to state career ed standards for each related course, and they will address these changes to appropriate staff in August of 2015. Dance, music, theater, and visual arts will present curriculum writing in alignment to staff in August of 2015 with continued work throughout the year with all levels. And so at this time, we request approval to adopt the Nebraska Fine Arts Standards as the Omaha Public Schools Fine Arts Standards.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for any, Dr. Kerberg?
Just that I was remiss, I would like to introduce the whole team in case you don't know them. Linda Halsey obviously chaired our committee and I thank her for leading the presentation. She's our supervisor of vocal music. Next to her, Delane Havlevick. He is our supervisor in charge of the area that was specific to the media, but he does business, marketing, information technology. And then Michelle Johnson, she's our supervisor of instrumental music. Shelley Erickson, you know her most for English Language Arts and Writing, but she also has the fine arts area of theater performance under her area. Dr. Naylin, who you know, has the dance in the PE curriculum area. And then of course, the art area, we're very fortunate to have Angie Fisher, our supervisor in that area. So I did want you to know the team that worked with all those teachers that was listed, went to the State Department readings, meetings, and sat in on the writing of these standards.
So if no one has, oh, Mrs. Fay.
I was just going to move to approve the Nebraska Fine Arts Standards as the Omaha Public Schools Fine Arts Standards.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Fay and second by Mr. Wayne to approve the adoption of the Nebraska Fine Arts Standard as the Omaha Public Schools Fine Arts Standards. Are there any questions? Mr. Wayne?
I did ask Dr. Kerberg offline if there was an additional cost. She stated that there was no additional cost to implement these standards because our curriculum is very close to alignment, so I just wanted the public to know that.
Great. Mrs. Fay?
Well, I just want to thank you all for the work that you put into this and I think, Mrs. Halsey, you can help me remember, but I think Nebraska's the last or second to the last state to adopt Fine Arts Standard, second to the last state. Thank you, Angie.
We're down there.
We're down there. But Nebraska did adopt these last spring, about a year ago, and now here we are after a thorough review, adopting them as our Fine Arts Standards. So I want to thank the board for their support of that. We had a presentation, I think it was at the last board meeting, from South High School. We no longer just have to rely, even as a district, just on anecdotal data about the benefits of the fine arts to student achievement. We have our own data here within the district at our own Fine Arts Magnet High School. So earlier this week, I sent out, or last week I guess, I sent out to the board just a little blurb that was in the American School Board Journal about the turnaround arts pilot that's a part of the turnaround grants that you can apply for.
about the Turnaround Arts pilot that's a part of the turnaround grants that you can apply for. So if you haven't, like Katie said, we get a lot of email. If you haven't had time to look at that, it's in your American School Board Journal that you received for this month. And I don't know if Mr. Vargas has any experience with the turnaround arts, but it's having tremendous success where it's been implemented. I think Des Moines was one of the first pilots for turnaround arts. So if that, as we go forward with the agenda items that Mr. Wayne and Mr. Scanlon requested, if turnaround arts is something that we decide to pursue, we'll be ready. So, and I have no doubt that we'll see great success. Thank you again for all your work. I know it was a lot of work. And I'm really proud that OPS is choosing to adopt these standards as our standards. I think it'll make a difference across the board.
Thank you very much, and thank you for being a part of the State Standards Board, or however, you know, that works. So we appreciate that you all were involved in that. With that, roll call, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotting?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. Great. With that, we will move to J2C, Schematic Design for Ponca Elementary School, which we heard at the last board meeting. But I loved the new picture of the front that I got, so thank you so much.
Yes. Okay, President Gotting, members of the board, Mr. Evans. We came to you two weeks ago to present the Educational Specifications Submittal for Ponca Elementary School. And tonight, we're basically doing the second phase of the standard design process and we're presenting the schematic design submittal. So if you've had a chance to look through some of your information, you've probably seen some of the neat things with the main entry and that sort of thing. But I've got Kenneth Han with Kenhan Architects to speak a little bit more on the design detail. But I just wanted to hit a few topics real quick before I brought Ken up. In your packet of information also, you received a document that sort of outlined a schematic design phase and what that really means to a project. And just to sum it up, it really takes some of the information that we received from the Educational Specifications Committee, as well as the goals of the Capital Facilities Plan. And now we're starting to put things together to show adjacencies, relationships, and that sort of thing. So again, it's us working to really define and bring the design together. A few things I wanted to highlight before I brought Ken up are our current construction budget is $2.5 million, and that's to actually build the school with its modifications and all the improvements. And we're tracking now to really hit that target fairly well with our current estimates. The other thing we're working on is we're really trying to determine sort of the best way to deliver the project in terms of scheduling and phasing. We've got a pretty firm idea of when we're going to start the project, sometime in May. And what we're trying to do now is really determine some of the specific time periods that we want to complete the project. So we take a lot of things into consideration, current market conditions, construction costs, and that sort of thing. And that's something that we're working on. And when we present to you our construction documents, that's when we'll have all that information sort of packaged for you all in greater detail. There's also one clarification. If you look at the very last page on the sort of that spiral-bound document that you have in front of you, we show a date of April 20th where we're going to bring construction documents to the board. And that's actually the date that Ken and his team are going to provide the documents to Jacob and OPS to review prior to bringing it to you all. So I just wanted to make that brief clarification tonight. So I'm going to stop talking and let Ken give you a little more detail on the design.
Thank you, Jeremy. I'm glad to be back again. It was two weeks ago that we came, as Jeremy said, and presented the Educational Specifications to you all. And as he said, we have been working now to incorporate as many of the desires and wants from not only the Educational Specification Committee, but also the children, because we did have a chance to talk to them and find out what some of the things are that they'd like to see in a renovated school. Since we saw you last, we've been crawling through tunnels, looking above ceilings, investigating, figuring out how we're going to get the systems into this building and the things that have to happen to this building incorporated. In addition to that, you'll see that we've started to create some ideas about how the building could look. We're really not changing the exterior very much, but you see that we do have an updated entry that is shown here in this slide that's on the wall. And if you look at the site plan, now we have an existing site that's really not going to change very much. You will see that we are putting a geothermal well field out between the exterior walking track and the septic field. That's going to fit in there, we believe, just fine. OPPD has been brought in to take care of putting that well field in. We'll make one little pitch for geothermal systems. On an 88-degree March day, you'd have air conditioning in this building, in that school, with the geothermal system. So who would have thought we'd have 88 degrees in the middle of March? We are updating the access for handicapped to the main entry. We're going to have accessible routes there, which we currently do not have. We're also making an accessible route from the school over to the portables. This is the floor plan of the school. You can see that we really aren't changing the overall footprint of the school, per se. We are updating systems. We're renovating restrooms, getting new lighting, a new roof, new finishes. We're going to have an updated layout that's going to revise how the administration can actually monitor and keep the front access to the building more secure and kind of observe the comings and goings of people that are in and around the entrance to the school. We also had to accommodate handicapped accessibility. So you'll see some new ramps in this floor plan and a lift that takes handicapped individuals up to the stage. Also, if you look, you'll see there's a blue area on the plan. That blue room is actually the library. And we are going to renovate that library into a new room that's also going to serve as a storm shelter for the school. And 100% of the people in the building can fit in that room. And it will have windows, so it won't be just a dark hole. It'll be a nice, fun room to be in. New power as required and IT upgrades as well. This is just a blow up of the area right around the entry. And we're rearranging things so the principal has a better strategic location. We had to get the ramp in here, so we had to move some things around. And in order to get the front entry accessible, we had to push the vestibule out. And that was part of what caused us to take a look at redoing the front entry feature as well. There's a few other comments here about teachers' lounge, restrooms, and workroom being combined. Also, we were able to come up with enough space for a collaboration room, which is something that the staff, as well as the students, can use. And it's right next to the ramp there. And it's in sort of a public spot, and we think it's going to get a lot of use. It was something that was really requested by the committee also. So these are the exterior drawings. We are not changing the building, per se, as I said earlier, but we are going to have some sustainable design features for the building, which would be new, energy-efficient windows. There will be less actual glass. There's going to be more opaqueness to it. But there'll be quite a bit of daylight still, but a much more improved energy envelope. We're adding insulation to not only the walls, but also the roof. The geothermal heat pumps will save a tremendous amount on energy, the great big boilers that are going away. And there'll be a new efficient lighting system throughout the building. So with that, I believe that's the last slide we had. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to take those.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you so much for the presentation, and the drawings look great. With that, is there a motion?
I move to approve the schematic design for Ponca Elementary School as part of the 2014 Bond Program.
So there is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mr. Wayne to approve the schematic design for Ponca Elementary School as part of the 2014 Bond Program. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotting?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to J2D, Lease Termination Agreement, JP Lord. So Mr. Evans will introduce this item.
I know we've got legal counsel with us tonight, and there's some contractual language. It's on the board agenda. I would just share that this conversation with UNMC started two years ago, three years ago. I know it's been a conversation that I've been involved in. In fact, Mr. Wayne and I had some even conversations over a year and a half ago as we were trying to work through all the details on this. So I'm proud to say that we finally have reached a conclusion with, I think, some contractual language that's very beneficial for the taxpayers, for the citizens, and most importantly, for our most fragile students in OPS. So it's quite an accomplishment. And with that, I'd turn it over to legal counsel if there's any questions on the contractual language.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the lease termination agreement among the district and board of regents and the University of Nebraska and the Nebraska Medical Center.
So a motion by Mr. Wayne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams. Motion by Mr. Wayne, second by Ms. Williams to approve the lease termination agreement among the district, the board of regents of the University of Nebraska, and the Nebraska Medical Center. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Fay?
This has been a long discussion, as Mr. Evans said. I think actually probably closer to three or maybe even four years. And I really appreciate the way that this has, we've been given the opportunity to move forward at our own pace. When we first started the conversation, there wasn't even a bond on the table. So being able to take our time and do it right allowed that to come into play, which made it sort of a different conversation. And it's going to be really beneficial to all the students and families, many of whom attend JP Lord from the time they're four until they're 21. So I think that the history of JP Lord School is really interesting. As a board member, you haven't been over there before we leave it. You should go over there. It's tied to the polio epidemic. There's actually a, which I hope moves over to the new school. No matter what it's called, there's a portrait of JP Lord behind the desk in the school. It's a neat environment to go over and see. I want to continue to encourage staff, but also let the public know that parents and families are going to be, just as they were involved in the EdSpecs team for Ponca, are going to be involved in designing the new school, which is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. And so I look forward to seeing that unfold as it comes before us down the road. But thank you to all the people who put work into this, and I'm excited about the new facility.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gotting?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move to J2E, Legislative Update. And if you open your legislative positions, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Fay, who chairs that committee.
So the action item that we have for the Legislative Committee, which met via conference call last Friday, is on page 14. It's actually the very end of slide 13 and the beginning of page 14. It's the yellow highlighted portion, which talks about LB 448, which is the OSERS and PERS merger bill. We're not actually taking a position on the bill as it's written, but we have a position statement that we're proposing and asking the board to adopt tonight as the position of the board. And just for future discussion and for the legislative team and for the whole board, I did ask Mr. Ray to get a copy of the comments from our speaker earlier today so that we can have that as we move forward in all of our deliberations and discussions about any of the OSERS bills. There's the two OSERS bills. So this is the merger bill, 448, and the proposed language. We did it in the format that's very similar to the statement we adopted on the TOSA and on the learning community on those two statements. I won't read it to you, but we would, Mr. Kramer is here if anybody has any questions specifically about the language.
Does anyone have any questions specific to the language on 448? If not, at this time, oh, Mr. Wayne?
I didn't get a chance to read this beforehand, but I'm really struggling with the last sentence. I don't know how that's, how I feel.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Can I address why we added that in? Because that was a part of our discussion, well, you were there.
I was there.
I'll tell the rest of the board. The reason that we added that in is because since the bill is not currently, a bill isn't currently written that addresses these principles. The way that Senator Nordquist's bill is written is not one that we want to take a position to oppose or support. It's, so we are trying to insert sort of bullet points to cover the things that we would like to see in a bill should one come out of committee, if that makes sense. And this last piece about fundamentally believes that it should retain the responsibility for oversight and management of the administrative functions as long as the Board of Education has liability for decisions made by the trustees under whatever authority they have, then it was our recommendation that the board should then be able to oversee that administrative position since we would ultimately be held liable for any administrative decisions.
I agree with that portion. That's not what it says. As long as we retain the liability, I agree that the board should oversee the administration functions. But that word is missing regarding liability. I mean, if the state relieved us from the liability but kept two separate systems, that would go against, contrary to what that last sentence says.
Maybe I'll jump in here. I think our positions were related to the investment management. And so it was what I think the trustees on the board of the OSERS and also from our legislative conversation had was a nice compromise from a full merger of the two systems to be able to have the investment piece. But if we're focused on the investment piece with the Nebraska School Employees Retirement System, that would leave the liability with the Omaha Public Schools. So therefore, it kind of ties together because if the first happens, then the administration, the liability would stay with us, and we would want to be responsible for the administration. Does that make sense?
Agreed, but that's not what it says. And the reality is that as long as the liability is with the city of Omaha, taxpayers, or the state, the legislature just argued for three days about dry beans. And the reason I say that is because as long as the liability stays with somebody, it's going to be taxation without representation unless the board oversees it. So I don't know if that last sentence is necessary. And if it is, then we need to specify as long as the liability stays with us, then we should have that. But if there's two separate systems and the liability is not with us, that would go against our principle. And I don't think that was really talked about on our Legislative Committee, according to that last statement, the last sentence.
So you're suggesting on the final piece, as long as OSERS remains a separate retirement system and the liability is held by Omaha Public Schools, is that what you're?
That's what I would add, I would add that.
So I think?
If that makes sense, is that?
Mrs. Fay?
I want to make sure I understand it, and maybe, Mr. Kramer, you can. Until Mrs. Gotting just said that she was talking about the investment piece, I understood that last sentence to be related to oversight and management of the administrative functions. even separate from that, because decisions that are made in the retirement office could ultimately come back to hold the school board accountable if, for example, misinformation was given or inaccurate information was given to a retiree, that could come back to the school board, completely separate from investment advice, correct? And that was the intent behind that last statement?
Yeah, the, the, the language as drafted was intended to be broader than just the investment piece, it was intended to cover, essentially, I think what Mr. Wayne described is, is correct. The intent here, I think perhaps the best way to do that would be to say at the end there, should retain the responsibility for oversight and management of the administrative functions of the retirement system for as long as OPS or the Omaha Public Schools retain the liability for the system. And that would really clarify what the intent was from the discussion had at the legislative committee and among the trustees, who are board members.
I, I do agree with you, I didn't, I didn't mean to confuse that issue. Just taking it away from being a full merger, which would then give the administrative responsibility to PERS, which was not what we were looking at doing, so that's, that was my intent, so sorry about that. So, the wording that you just said, can you say that one more time?
So, the last sentence would read, "The Board of Education fundamentally believes that it should retain the responsibility for oversight and management of the administrative functions of the retirement system for as long as OPS remains responsible for the liability."
Is there any discussion on that particular piece? Does everybody? And Mr. Wayne, are you okay with that?
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
So, I, I move to approve the principles proposed in LB, what is labeled as LB four seven, four four eight. Not position on it, but the principles or proposed principles with the added language Mr. Kramer had described in his statements, which Mr. Ray has accurate account for, for the minutes.
He's, he's diligently writing, so we assume so.
Second.
And I just wanted to apologize to the committee. Friday, I got off the phone a little early, we have a basketball tournament with over 100 teams that we run out of North and Benson, it starts Friday, so I didn't get a chance to get to this, to, to that, so that's why I apologize for that.
So, there's a motion by Mr. Wayne and a second by Mrs. Fay with the change to move to approve the principles as set forth with the change that Mr. Kramer had, which Mr. Ray has documented, related to OPS maintaining the liability of the system. Is there any discussion on that? Fay.
Mrs. Godding, if I could add one thing. For the members of the full board, I know that Mr. Lindsay shared, this has been designated as the retirement committee's priority bill, so we do anticipate that even though there is no language yet, that something is coming, and you'll have an opportunity to see in writing what Senator Nordquist's proposals are, with, we believe, your input.
That's a great point, thank you. So, seeing no discussion, and Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. We'll move on to J two F, grant.
Point of order before we leave that committee. I want the, the board to be aware from the committee that our priority bills has been listed. There are some learning community bills that are out there, and so this is going to be a fluid process. And we've already passed a policy to address some of the fluidity, but I wanted the full board to be aware that priority bills are designated. I'm sure Mr. Lindsay or Mrs. Fay or Matt can send out some of those priority bills that affect us, but I guess just beware, it's going to be fluid, and, and Mr. Evans and executive officers and the legislative committee chair are going to have a lot of work to do over the next month.
Thanks, Justin, I appreciate that. If you ever want anything to be highlighted as a part of the conference call that we have on every Friday during the session, just let Mr. Ray know, and we'll make sure that it's on the legislative committee agenda, and even if we've already discussed it and taken a position on it, because as Justin just said, that things are changing very quickly now.
Right, and before we move on, then I'll just turn it over to Mr. Evans for a moment on that point, so thank you, Mr. Wayne.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wayne, Ms. Fay. Madam President, you're exactly right. The priority bills are out there, one of them that's very significant for us, LB five twenty-eight by the Senate Ed Chair, Senator Sullivan, actually is meeting with the GNSA group, the Greater Nebraska School Administrators Group or School Association Group on Wednesday, and I believe Connie and I will be up there, and if Ms. Fay wanted to join, we certainly would like to have you as well, or, or other board members to have an opportunity. I think we're going to have a meeting prior to Senator Sullivan joining us at lunchtime on Wednesday, so it is going to be fluid, there, there could be attachments to, whether it's LB five twenty-eight, which is really, if you look at it in its current condition, it's very much like the superintendent's plan that the school board voted on earlier this year. So, we'll have opportunities to continue working on, in fact, Connie and I have had long discussions about how we can increase poverty and ELL, because that was the big piece of that, of that plan, was how do we make sure if something changes with the learning community and the common levy, that ELL and increased poverty are taken care of, and so we're diligently working on several different plans that we'll be sharing more with the legislative committee as well as the school board down the road, but just wanted to give you that update as well. Thank you.
Great. With that, we will move on to J two F, grant fund budget adjustments. Mr. Wayne, is that?
I just had a general question of, of how many students do we serve with KIOS as far as high students participate? And, and this may be a question that comes back to us, but I saw it on the agenda, and it I know most of it's reimbursable, but the second question is, is how much funding, whether general or otherwise, from our budget do we expend? So, students involved and then general fund, budget funds, or wherever those funds come from, the non-reimbursable funds. And I don't know if that answer would be today, because I just, again, I was tied up all weekend, but I did want to ask those questions and make sure that, moving forward, I could get those answers.
I'm not sure I have all of those answers tonight, Mr. Wayne, but I, I believe it's approximately 150,000 of general fund, and the remaining part of the million, the million-dollar budget is all through grants. But I do see Susan Christopherson's in our audience, and I know she serves on the board for KIOS, so she could probably give us the budget dollar and the number of students.
Okay, she doesn't have it right now, so would it, would it be okay if she emails all of us and lets us know? That would be great.
So, I would be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. So, on J two F, if there's is there a motion for J two F? And we don't have.
I move to approve the detailed grant fund budget for the 2014-15 fiscal year for KIOS, and the radio community service grant for the Corporation of Public Broadcasting, and the Sherwood Foundation Grants.
I think that's good. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, so a motion by Mrs. Fay and a second by Ms. Williams on the KIOS development budget, grant fund adjustments, the radio community service grant, and the Sherwood Foundation Grants. And I think they're all for, two of them are for the 14-15 year. Is there any discussion on that item? If not, Mr. Wayne is abstaining. Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Seven I, one abstention.
Motion carries. With that, we'll move to J two G, Kagan Student Engagement Institute. And I think Mr. Vargas asked about this one.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just, I figure this would be actually a great opportunity for us to talk a little bit about. So, these are two items, wanted to learn more about how Kagan fits in with the greater strategic plan. I know it does, so it's not a question of whether or not it does, it's more of a question of learning more around how this is different or, and improved from the development we did in the previous year, so the public knows that one, we, we, every year we spend funds, obviously Title II funds on professional development, and how we are changing as a result, strategic plan, how this is sort of different or new, or how Kagan has improved its professional development over the course of this last couple of years, and how we're taking advantage of that improved professional development, given that this is, you know, $125,000, $30,000 or so thousand dollars that we'll be spending in reimbursable grant funds for these PD opportunities for our staff.
I'd love to jump in, and Mr. Vargas is correct, it's 2.3.3, which is a part of our strategic plan. And one of the things we're trying to do is provide professional development locally. So, first of all, what's new is, historically, it wasn't always locally, and we used to send teachers out. The institute where Kagan does most of their training happens to be located in Florida, and so it's kind of cost prohibitive to get a high-volume return, costing probably 1,500 approximately per teacher, which doesn't count for the many days. So, it's actually a week-long training session. We found a greater return, I think Mr. Vargas said what's new or different. We did a regression analysis, we, we looked at the schools that had had the entire school trained over the last two years, I'd like to use Gilder Elementary as an example. They have everyone on staff trained in these engagement strategies. They're beating the odds, they come in as one of our top five schools in terms of their regression analysis scores. So, what we're seeing are two things, better return by doing it locally instead of sending people out. We have 300 teachers trained at 125,000. If it was 1,500 to 3,000 to send teachers out, you're looking at over a million-dollar cost versus 125,000-dollar cost. Number two, we can do this in a manner that allows a whole school over multiple years to get trained. We can't get everyone trained at once, because we have 4,000 teachers, it's 300 teachers per summer. And then number three, those schools that have more teachers trained are doing a higher return on engagement. Now, something that I know, Mr. Vargas, and many of you will appreciate, this came out of the needs analysis. When we looked at the level of engagement district-wide when Cross and Jofteis came in, I'll just run through the data. Our middle schools were at a 60% engagement in terms of what they saw, meaning 40% of the time, the kids were listening or learning passively, watching something or listening. At primary K through three, the observers saw 40% engagement, which meant 60% of the time, they were again auditory learners. At intermediate, four through six, it was 35% engagement, and at high school, nine through 12, it was 25% engagement. After we got that needs analysis back, we actually put it into our academic action plan, we prioritized four engagement strategies, and that was different for us, that's another new part, because previously, we said pick from the menu, so we took the highest yield using effect size and prioritized four, and our criteria for prioritization is something Kagan makes into an acronym called PIES. It's positive interdependence, individual accountability, equal participation, and simultaneous interaction. In other words, if you're in a small group, you're held accountable for engaging and participating, you can't just let the talkative person in the group cover for you. Equal participation, individual accountability, simultaneous interaction. Those are the key things that make it different from just a small group where one student may do the project, the others may listen, so we've really helped our teachers understand what's the difference between cooperative learning and small group, because they are night and day difference. And so, that's really key. Kids don't engage if they're not in your top 20%. 80% of all kids that ask questions are your high-ability learners. 80% of the kids not asking questions are middle-of-the-road, average, or perhaps kids who are challenged in terms of their learning skills. So, this engages all learners, and that's why we like it. It's not just for high-ability kids. It's great for high-ability kids, but it's good for all learners, so that's some of the things we've changed. If there's anything I didn't cover, I'll jump in, but and we do use the Kagan workbook materials, and if anybody wants a copy of it, I did bring one down. If anybody'd like to have a copy, and it is a new engagement tab in our Best Instructional Practices Handbook this year. So, tab number seven, if you're interested, so.
That's incredibly helpful, and it, it leads me to, so what's I think incredibly helpful about looking at this is when we see our related goals, I, I looked at the strategic plan and saw that it was 3.2. I think it's just really good for the board and for me, as we're always getting into the details on how this is aligned to our strategic plan and in the concrete numbers, I don't know if we can add that, because it says principle three on our board agenda, but seeing that it's principle 3.2 just helps bring that to light. I really appreciate that this is sort of a train-the-trainer type model, we're trying to expand our capacity, which I think does align with, you know, some of the feedback we receive from standards-based grading, or, you know, tangibly was that implementation is something that we want to improve upon when we're thinking about our programs. So, just curious on what are additional ways in it, from after the institute, the summer training, that we're thinking about building the capacity of our teacher leaders and our, or any of our instructional coaches or what have you, to be able to support this work? And we're not just adding something else on their plate, but we're also sort of either building capacity for somebody else to support them, or taking something else off their plate, like what are plans for that?
One of the things we're doing that's kind of unique in the United States, we're not having a half-day school improvement plan workshop like we did in the past. This will be the first summer we're creating a principals institute. We have been working collaboratively, curriculum instruction assessment, the Office of School Support, specifically the Executive Directors, National Consultant Steve Garing, to create a two-day workshop. What we want to do as a part of that is showcase what's working at other schools, so that can be then replicated across the district. So, if my Gilder example could be used, that would be a great principle there to talk about the return that's occurred with the result of high engagement strategies. So, that's one example of how we'll be getting that information out. One other thing we do during our principal meetings each month, a segment of the meeting at the front of the time the executive directors have, is sharing best practices between amongst schools. So, that's another way we try to replicate good ideas. And then during presentations, we have principals talk about what's working. In fact, in math, in our January meeting, just as an example, Deb Priceon spoke about distributed practice and homework. Our Harrison principal, Andrea Haynes, spoke about a book study that she was doing with accessible math, and we had another principal who spoke as well, Brian Dunn at the middle school. So, we do try to really have them share, because we need them to know highlighted best practices. And then at the beginning of principal meetings, Mr. Evans always highlights those things that are working well across the district, that's a part of his superintendent's update.
Do you have any other?
No, I just appreciate, so one thing I'll just ask for, it's not follow-up, but I think more it's for making sure that this information goes back to the Strategic Planning Committee for this, is that we are assessing the quality of this PD. You talked about the regression analysis, so just making sure we're capturing all this data, I know we are, but I just wanted to share with the public that this is something that we're doing differently, we, we've been doing this ongoing, but we are doubling down on is every program we are, we are implementing having the impact that we want at the student level, not just qualitatively, but quantitatively, so the regression analysis should be able to help us with that. Also, I know that the, we have a measure here that's the, increase the percentage of administrators, teachers, and staff reporting satisfaction with professional development and feedback, and making sure we, we utilize that to determine the effectiveness of this, for when next year, we are seeing if this is the best then avenue for us to be doing this type of training for our teachers. for our teachers.
Our Staff Development Office does collect that for us, the evaluations.
Okay. With that... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Wayne.
And this, I agree with Mr. Vargas, and I think what I need as we move forward is, there's going to be expenditures, but the overall PD plan, I'm going back to the comprehensive plan for increasing mathematics and professional developments, mentioned over 20 times, but yet, I don't know the overall strategy of what does that plan entail? And more importantly, maybe a overall budget of what does PD and what, where all fits into... I mean, not, the comprehensive achievement plan, I think, is a little too detailed for me, but I will highlight and note that all the responsibilities are in CI, building leadership and things like that, but I don't see teachers on this plan. That concerns me a lot. And I think what I would like to see is an overall comprehensive PD plan and a committee of teachers and administrators putting a plan together. And I know every, at every stage, or maybe something that comes up and say, we're going to do something different or change it, but at least at a board level, we can see what is the plan for improving rigor? I mean, we hear about rigor and what... And we saw our needs analysis where even staff said that, you know, PE has to be improved. So when I hear that, I want to make sure we're addressing those needs when staff says that, and I'm going back to the needs analysis where I had it, teachers and school administrators believe that professional development needs to be improved. That's on page 33 of our needs analysis. So I want to make sure as a board, we're answering that need by saying, one, it's improved, but it isn't just more of the saying, that it's different in how that fits in. And I'm talking high-level strategy of professional development for the next year. We're going to focus on math, whatever, whatever, and here are some of the ideas we're thinking about, and at least, so when I read the plan for increasing math, I have a framework or a reference point of what that 20 different mentions of PD is. It'd just be helpful for me, and I'm thinking the rest of the board going forward, of where are we? And then maybe as we start building a board calendar, that that's brought up every year in May or March, is looking at the next year, here's how we're going to shift PD going forward and what we think is best for the next year. And we start really looking at our budget and prioritizing where our budget is, but I would like to see that come from a committee of teachers, and I think we already have one, of teachers and staff, and putting that together, overall framework and strategy to actually match that 2.3 and how we can look at it every year, actually, just as my comments.
So one of the work groups, out of the four work groups that have worked diligently this year, is on professional development, and I think Dr. Garnett has been chairing that committee.
Can I say this? Mr. Wayne, you're right. We are having a committee of teachers, principals, central office staff, and Omaha Education Association to look at a comprehensive plan for PD in the district. And we are in the process of looking for a facilitator with expertise to help us build that plan, and we're going to have that person come in and work with our committee and really drafting what a plan looks like that will carry us not only for the next year, but for three to five years, and help us set our priorities. What does training look like for teachers and how are teachers involved in building that training? What does it look like for teachers? What does overall budget look like? What are our funding sources around that? And what are the strategies that we will put in place for that? So we're hoping to have that rolled out next fall for our district to use as a roadmap for professional development.
So Mr. Evans and I just chatted for a minute. It might be a good idea now that the four work groups are coming kind of to a place where they've done a year's worth of work, maybe to do a workshop on. The work that's been done by the four work groups is, was just mentioned there as well. So at this point, Mr. Evans would like to add something?
Thank you, Madam President. Great conversations, great questions, great conversations. I think it is a great workshop topic. One of the things we discovered as we started the work group was, we were doing PD in one area that might be inclusive of math and math strategies aligned to the strategic plan, but you also might have, because you're shifting technology pretty fast, now you've got another group of staff doing professional development on Microsoft Innovative Educator Program, which puts in Microsoft-trained teacher who knows how to integrate that technology, which is also important and also a part of the strategic plan. But one of the things we found out is sometimes Group A didn't know that Group B was doing this, and so we were... Well, one thing we were doing is running out of substitutes, because we were doing so much training, and part of it was technology, part of it was mathematics, part of it might be history alive and doing something innovative with social studies. And so you end up, you're hitting all these different places, and some of them, one group didn't know the other group was doing it. And so we kind of regrouped a little bit as we started looking at that, and I think Dr. Garnett's right. We've got the Teacher Advisor Group, the OEA representation. It would be great to come back with a more robust look at that, because that's what we're developing now. I think we've done a great job, and I don't think we've done a great job of coordinating it. In other words, I think the Microsoft Innovative Educator training piece, I've heard rave reviews from all the teachers involved. I've heard rave reviews, like the teacher we just heard tonight, on math. And I know we've got good reviews on a lot of other training, and I know Kagan is a... I mean, that's a national strategy that you hear all, hear about. I've used it in other districts. Very common cooperative work. But my point of the story is, we need to see it, and we're just now started our first-ever priority calendar where everything's being loaded on that. Mr. Dixon's been responsible for that, because what I was hearing is, we don't have enough substitutes. We're doing training for X, we're doing training for Y, and we didn't realize we were. So it kind of ties back into this. That's kind of where we ended up just a few weeks ago, or a month ago, I said, we're not really all coordinated yet. So that's what this committee's doing right now. So it ties back into your question of the bigger picture. What grants are you using? Because most of it's grant-funded, but what is the grant source? Is there any general fund to it? All of those pieces are now being part of that plan.
And I think also on the Critical Friend Visit, it was the one area that was pointed out from the work groups that needed to be kind of regrouped and do some other work. So if you reflect back on that document, that was mentioned there as well. So at this time... Oh, Mrs. Fay.
That's really helpful, so thank you for explaining that, Mr. Evans. I appreciate both Mr. Vargas and Mr. Wayne bringing this up, particularly Justin, taking a step back and looking at the bigger picture. That's the way I would prefer to... Well, I understand we have to approve this because of the dollar amount, I'm assuming is past the threshold that requires a board approval, but understanding how it fits into the overall strategy, similarly with the math earlier, how it fits into the overall strategy for improving math scores, and then the piece that was mentioned by Mr. Vargas that I'm sure you meant to include it in there, but how are we evaluating the effectiveness of the professional development? So always wanting to know whether it did what we thought it was going to do, and if we're going to continue it, how are we going to continue to fund it if it's grant-funded? And... Or if it didn't do what we were hoping it was going to do, what are we going to do instead?
All very good points. So, Mr. Wayne.
I move to approve J2G and J2H, Kagan Study Engagement Institute and Kagan Cooperative Meeting for Instructional Leaders Institute.
There's a motion by Mr. Wayne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vargas. So a motion by Mr. Wayne and a second by Mr. Vargas to approve the Kagan Student Engagement Institute, J2G, and Kagan Cooperative Meeting for Instructional Leaders Institute, J2H. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fay.
Aye.
Gauding.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ada.
Motion carries. This time, we'll move to K, receipt of reports. There are a couple of reports, a Purchasing Division Six Month Cost Savings Report and the ESUCC Board Minutes. There is no closed session for this evening, so let the record reflect that the meeting is adjourned at 8:41 PM. Well, thank you all.